First order of business is the approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes, one from the May budget hearing and the other from the May regular meeting. Has anyone, everyone had a chance to look through it? Them?
Yes.
The changes that you requested have been incorporated?
Thank you. I appreciate that. My pleasure. This was good, okay. Hi Lucia. Great, we are just, you're just in time for the minutes vote.
Good, I planned it that way.
Thanks for it. Good. Can I make a motion to approve these? I can, so I'm going to make a motion to approve the May. First, I'll start with the budget hearing minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, so those minutes have been approved. Next, I will make a motion to approve the May regular board meeting minutes. Can I get a second?
A second.
Corey seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. So minutes have been approved. And we will start with our regular business. And there's, I'm just gonna say one quick thing, which is that this is Chuck's last meeting, so we're gonna make it really, really good.
And long?
And long.
Extra, extra, extra long, yes, we're gonna make it really good, and that's all I'll say about that for now.
So no adjourning, in other words?
What's that? No adjourning, a midnight adjournment. Yes. Francis, please.
Oh, it's me, okay. The, yes, the WLS Board finally approved the strategic plan for, for the next two, three years. This, this plan has been in the works for over a year. There's a strategic committee that was set up for, for trustees, with me chairing it, and we worked fairly seriously on that, meeting every other month, and revised and revised and revised until we finally agreed on a final tax, which was discussed by the Board at the last meeting and unanimously approved. It is a very simple document, and I plan to circulate that. Maybe I should have done that. It has three parts. The first part is the revised mission, vision, and, and mission and vision statements, and over, an overview statement of what WLS is all about, the organizations, the libraries, et cetera, and the kind of things that you're probably very familiar with. The, the mission statement and the vision statements did not sort of break new ground, we sort of updated what is already in, in the original statement and made it more powerful. The emphasis was on empowering our patrons to use the library, et cetera. You will see that spelled out in the, in the plan, I don't want to take too much time on that. The plan itself has three elements. One is the promotion of equity and access. This is, this is important. Equity ensures that the resources of the library is available to as many people as possible. Access is, if there is a resource there, and you don't, you don't have access to it, then it's useless, like having money in the bank and, and, and you don't know about it. So emphasis will be on that, promotion of equity and access to the library resources. And secondly, we will emphasize the importance of expanding community involvement, including partnership with the member libraries and other organizations in the field. We are not the only game in town, there are others as well, so we need to work collaboratively with them for the benefit of our, of our patrons. And that is spelled out quite, quite clearly in the plan. The third is the update and constantly improve the infrastructure of the, of WLS and the libraries, constantly improve it. And during the, the committee, I particularly stressed the importance of being prepared for the unexpected, which is almost a contradiction in terms, but, you know, try to be as well prepared for what may happen, because it may happen. We just had ransomware suddenly the other day. Unfortunately, the libraries were well-prepared, and we were not affected very much in this. So that, that's what we mean by being prepared and updating our structures and keeping in touch with the other libraries so that we are aware of what is out there. This may not do the trick completely, but at least it goes a long way, you know? So update and improve our, our structures constantly. The third was a recommendation that I made, that this strategy should be circulated to all the libraries and to all the boards, and to legislators, and should be given a wide circulation as much as possible, and should be discussed. So that, that is, that's going to be done. And within the WLS itself, we decided that the executive committee should take charge of ensuring that this is not just a plan nicely written on paper and you forget about it and shell, no, it should be a living document. And that means that somebody should be on top of it to ensure that the different organizations within WLS and the libraries and others are aware of this plan and are actually taking it into account. They are ready to, like, extend doing that, as you have it in your plan here. So the, the executive committee will be in charge of monitoring that almost every other month. And also, we decided that after two years, there should be a review of the document to see what has happened, have we implemented it, what were the challenges, do we need to modify it a little bit and so on, what's is changing, what has not changed. So it should be a living document that is adjusting itself with the times. You will find it a very interesting document, it's only three pages.
Wild.
And I will, I will circulate it as, as quickly as I can, probably by tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I look forward to meeting it. Is that, you have more?
That's it, yeah.
That's it, okay. Thank you. The president's report. So we have a bunch of votes that we will proceed with momentarily. And we have, yep, do you want us to start with these?
Sure.
Sure. Yep, we are required to vote on the departing and, I mean, sorry, the incoming and current board members for-
Whose terms are expired.
Yes, okay, whose terms are expired, but they wish to remain as part of the foundation board. So those are, these are active members, right?
Current board members who are seeking reappointment.
Great, okay, so they are Leslie Demus, Lynn Green, Teresa Leghorn, Lori Morrow, Rod Roulette, and Joan Clark, and these are very active board members, you might know them, some or all. So I can make a motion here to approve the continuation of their terms, or the extension of their terms, or renewal of their terms, however you want to say it. Can I get a second, please?
Seconds.
Lucia, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then no opposed. And then I'm also just gonna make a separate board vote for the new, newly appointed, right? Are they, they're appointed, they're accepted?
Once the board-
Once, once we vote on them, so here's the big moment. We have Erin Harrell, Harrell, do we know how to say that?
I believe it's Harrell.
Harrell. Very extensive resume here, impressive, and we have Sharon Weeks, who is familiar to me. Can I have, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve these incoming board members. Can I get a second?
A second.
Okay.
Corey.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, so congratulations to all continuing and new board members of the New Rochelle Public Library Foundation. That's great. Okay, we're gonna, in your, in your folders is a calendar for the 2023, 2022, 2023 library board meeting schedule. Hi, Daniel. If everyone had a chance to look at it, the only kind of funky thing that we did apart from the usual shifting in May to accommodate the budget hearing and the voting, is that we moved the July meeting up a week, or back, forward a week, to July 21st. I can make a motion to approve this calendar. Does anyone have any questions, or?
As long as there's a cake on the 8th of September.
Oh, noted. All right, cake for Beth. I'm gonna write that for Tom.
Anything.
Cake, okay, I wrote that down, just as, as notated.
Let the minutes reflect.
Let the minutes reflect, there is, there is notation for September 8th. Can I get, I will make a motion to approve the calendar, the meeting schedule for 2022, 2023. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
That's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Great, so that's when we will see each other monthly. Yeah, you can do that, but don't we have two, we can do that when we get to the policy committee, we have other policies, perfect, okay. I, I'm gonna wait on the next thing I'm gonna talk about, but, good, I'm done for now. Thank you.
Everybody, my report, just happy to tell you the trend continues. We are seeing more and more activity as time goes on, which is extremely gratifying for us, because there are moments when we were open and it was extremely quiet, but more and more people are using our facility, particularly seem to be enjoying our renovated spaces, our new study rooms and meeting rooms, our children's area is busy, our teen area is extraordinarily busy. It's such an interesting phenomena to wander through the library now, and the, the vast majority of people are on the younger side. You know, I don't think our, more of our older patrons have fully embraced coming back to the library for obvious reasons, but, but it, but we are busier. Our preschool programming has, was renewed and it was extremely busy. We're starting to do more and more programs for, for adults, and of course, we've always done teen programs, the numbers for attendance are going up, and I know Daniel will talk about some exciting upcoming programs that, that we can all look forward to, as well as our summer reading programs too, as well, which is, you know, imminent, summer is fortunately just about around the corner. So that's, so it's all happy news there. Our state, our state grant situation, we are on the cusp of hopefully getting approval for two grants that we wrote last August. Typically, what happens, it, it gets approved by the WLS Board, then it goes to Albany and is vetted by the New York State Library, vetted by the Dormitory Authority, and once all of that has been cleared, typically, the New York State Library will announce, but they announce in tandem with the legislative delegation in New York, because those folks were most, almost always the people that helped make the construction grants possible. You know, again, this year, not unlike previous years, where the governor or the governors lowballed us in terms of construction, and the legislature really fought to up it, which is, makes a big difference. We've seen it in this library, you can wander through Westchester County, other libraries, and, you know, this money is, really makes a difference in helping us provide safe, attractive, relevant facilities. So, so that, those two grants should be announced, and of course, they are $342,674 for the continued renewal of our facility, third floor this time, and we need a match of $114,224, that will be provided by our foundation, hopefully at the upcoming annual meeting. A much smaller grant, but still important, will be sent towards the Hubertot Children's Library, $17,813, which will allow us to replace the aging air conditioning units there, the, the slant fin, narrow ones that have been located in the building since, since the building was reopened in the 90s, so we're excited about that. The match is a far more modest $59,37, which we'll manage. I'm really excited to talk about a grant that I can, I can attribute to the hard work of one of our staff members, and that is Daniel O'Gerry, who's our IT head. As you've heard before, we've had, last year, we've had great success with E-Rate and ECF monies, well, once again, we achieved success. We were fully funded for the grants for E-Rate, and happy to tell you that the total amount we will be getting is $53,000, with our match of pretty modest $13,000, and that will apply to our ongoing discount for internet access, which allowed us to bump up our internet access considerably when we received the E-Rate money last year, and it's also for infrastructure money for our computers and our servers and other things as well. So at some point in the future, I will ask the Board to formally approve a matching grants of that $13,000 for that. And meanwhile, you folks remember that last year, we applied, Daniel applied, for the, a grant to allow us to have, let's see, 50 hotspots, Wi-Fi units, and 100 Chromebooks. They've arrived, we're working through the process, you folks will look at the policy that will allow us to allow the community to start borrowing. But Daniel has also applied for a year or two for ECF, and so what we're asking there are for monies to allow us to continue to have access to the internet for these devices, so they obviously can be successful. And we're also looking to ask for tablets, up to 100 tablets, which we, again, can loan both in the building and to our community as well, so, so, and, and the great thing about ECF is Daniel sort of constructed it that we don't need to match, it's all just money that's coming in, so, so it's really good news there. On the ARPA money that the, that the city of New Rochelle received in abundance is something that our organization, along with many other nonprofits, are looking at throughout the city, and we've had a series of conversations, Whitney has been part of them, and we're looking at options and opportunities to allow for that money to come to our library, and we, we think we have a good case. ARPA money is really sort of tied to, you know, the pandemic and ways to mitigate it, et cetera, in the future, and we think we have some very good possibilities. And from what we're hearing, there's not only a lot of money there, but there may be real opportunities for organizations like ours to be successful with what we decide. So we're, hopefully we'll have something to announce.
I have a question, are we applying as a, because we're not a 501(c)(3)?
We can as a library.
We can as a library?
I, I double-checked with Charles.
Charles?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess my question-
But the foundation is also a 501, is a 501(c)(3), and so we've been meeting with the foundation and trying to figure out, you know, maybe we can do our own, maybe the foundation can do one themselves or with another.
Right, more collaboratively or whatever.
Right, so, so we're sort of trying to figure out a way that we can get the biggest bang for our bucket, the most money to help our community. The fire stopping and safety project still is not underway, we are still exploring the issues that relate to that, and we're hopefully, we'll have something in the near future to, to start, and I'll be able to share with you. Let's see what else. And of course, as I had said, we are looking at grants for August. Main Library, we would truly like to find ways to mitigate the noisy conditions in the library. When this building was built, it won AIA awards, but there was no solutions for the acoustical reverberations that happened in a building like ours with our high ceilings and open atrium spaces. So we're working towards, hopefully, coming up with solutions, and we've been in touch with a variety of vendors, and we're, you know, we have a report that we authored a few years ago, that they're using as a springboard to come up with solutions. At HCL, we're certain that we can apply for, I guess, I guess you'd say sort of, not, not shelving, but storage solutions. The building was built in the latter part of the 19th century. When the renovation was done, it was successful, but there wasn't a real sense of what a library needs in terms of really efficient storage, and so we're coming to grips with that, and we're hoping to come up with something. And we may be able to add other pieces too, we're just waiting on WLS to circle back to us, and hopefully that will happen in the near future. Let's see what else. We also have been talking with a, a family foundation here in the local area about a variety of grants, Whitney's involved too, and we're not, we're, we're, there's one grant that's still outstanding, but the grant that we are ready to hopefully send out is something that they asked us to consider, and we're very excited about it, and it really ties to the DIY, do-it-yourself, and it's really sewing and sewing machines, which is becoming really popular. And so they have asked us to work up a program that would allow us to have programs, to have an instructor, to loan sewing machines to the community, and Lisa Itzkowitz has been on it, and she's been doing research, and we discovered in Brooklyn, of all places, there's, there, they just started a program, and actually, we're probably gonna circle back and find out a little bit more, but we're excited about this, because we think both for children, for teens, and adults, we think there's an appetite, people would be interested in that and learn, learn more.
I have a question. Is the idea that people would take sewing machines home, or that there'd be like a sewing machine station in the library?
It's a good question. It's a three-year grant, and what we've decided to do is to sort of ease into the whole process, because it's a lot, a lot to take on, and I think the first year of the grant would be to purchase the machines and to hire an instructor to connect with the community on each sort of age groups. And then the, the additional years, once we're sort of settled, we would be looking towards maybe having a, like a station, you know, where a machine or machines might be located that people could use, and we're talking about how do we qualify somebody, you know, et cetera, working, we're not there yet, but we're working on it. And then the third year, once we're really sort of settled, we would anticipate probably loaning the machines to people in the community. And again, the idea would be, we're not saying there'd be a test, but there might be some, maybe exposure to a YouTube video that we would make that would help people understand-
They're sewing licensees.
Yeah. Pats that on, right. But, so anyway, so it's sort of exciting, we think this is the sort of thing that's popular. Our teen librarian, Rio, who's amazingly talented and energetic, is very excited, she sort of has some skills there, and, and, and they've done some, not with the machines, our machines, but WLS has a few machines, they've done a few programs, and the teens really enjoyed it. So, so we're excited about that, and that grant might, over the course of three years, might total nearly $50,000, so a lot of money, but, but we're excited about it, and we'll, we'll see how it all works, works out. Let's see what else.
Can I add, I'm more than happy to add my two cents in, in, into this.
Are you, do you have some, yeah?
Yeah, no, I just wrote down, you know, there's different, there's different components to it that can work. It worked in Yonkers, Grayston Bakery is a non-profit organization, and Grayston Bakery ended up taking people from, that were coming out of jail and investing in a bakery, and they were selling products in addition to the training component of the behind-the-scenes of that. So that's something to look into as, especially since we're close to NYC, the fashion industry, how we can be some kind of conduit, if you will, and when it comes into sewing or anything and providing training, you know, or, or opportunities to have, have kind of that component, or as a maker space, similar to a, when people rent like offices or whatever the case, where, yeah, 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 where it's specifically to the fashion and design, and actually, Westchester Community College has their small division of, of fashion and design, and a lot of college students, incubators, yes, yes, and that can be an opportunity to, so there's so many ways that we can tie, where the sustainability, if we're talking about the three years, where you're looking forward, year four, five, six, and moving forward, how we can incorporate with other entities in business, where number one, provides opportunity in the social and economic component of people getting careers in this area, where there's a place to start that perhaps college may not be something, so entry-level vocational, if you will, or looking at it where people can say, hey, come use this space, I'm a fashion designer, or whatever, but I don't have the tools and skills, or the space to do that. So there's so many different ways that, that can take us to the next level.
I love the idea of kind of connecting to like a community college, or even a place like FAT, you know, where they may be looking for sort of experience, where their students might be in a position to want to give back and provide help, I, I'm gonna use that.
I'm gonna piggyback on that, because thank you for saying that, Daniel, that just sparked all these ideas in my head. And I think we've been talking about this, and I know that this is something that I think there, there are opportunities in Rochelle where there are synergies that we can create between different organizations. So I think about, this is, this is again, one of those opportunities where, depending on what's happening at the school district, where are there connections between the school district, between the library, between the Boys and Girls Club, and how do you, and maybe, I don't even know, but even between the, so where are those, those connections that we can make between those organizations that work on youth development and this grant? And how do we extend and leverage this grant to start creating deeper connections with these organizations, so that it becomes an organic and natural process, where when they have a program, they are thinking of the library? Whether they're using our space, whether we're, we're collaborating on space, but I think this is another opportunity to think broadly about how we are furthering any connections that we can make.
I think that's also clever idea, and, yep.
I agree with you on that, it's, you know, I, I work with the young adult population, 18 to 24, and in this, this age group that we're working, we call the Opportunity Youth, there's, there, we get these young people that have not been geared in the right pathway, if you will, and I have this, I have these two young men and young women who, like, are graffiti artists, but they're artists on clothing and, and this and that, and they sell their product to their friends. So one of them, a year ago, we pushed them to apply for the Council of the Arts, they were doing the, was it the NR, NY, right? Sculpture things, you know, the arts, and, 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 and he submitted it, he came in, like, I think, third place, he wasn't selected because he didn't add his drawings in, in color, that was the only reason, but nevertheless, that gave him the experience and opportunities of employment to work for summer, but I'm looking at this where we can look at opportunity and say, hey, you, you can go into your, your graffiti art and design on your clothing that you do for your friends, and shoes and sneakers, hey, there's an opportunity to take this, or there's a maker space or incubator at the library where you can design and do what, what you need to do, and, and that can trickle on of, of working with Boys and Girls Club and other entities and say, hey, this program's gonna have a fashion show for these youth and young adults that they've created, you know, and then, I mean, that working with you, it's sexy, it's sexy for funders across the board to say, oh, we're gonna support this. And Westchester Community College has a program, it's on their work, one of their new buildings on the second floor, but you're getting these individuals the, the essential skills to start in whatever shape, weight, or form. My mother started in this country, back in Rochelle, the powder pads, they used to let women in Rochelle, sew the back of the powder pads, and that was her first job coming to this, this country, and I think about that, for sewing machines, just every little strip on the, on the pad, every little strip and boxes, I can tell you, there's probably a lot of men and women.
Improvationalists.
Yes, yes, yeah, absolutely.
Yes, Wes, that new exact.
Yes, yes, and that was, that was the thing, and I can guarantee you, there's right now, men, women, individuals out there that are probably doing, fixing hems at home and can open up a business opportunity by using something like that that we have, you know what I'm saying? Like, it's, it just opens up so many pathways.
If they have skills already, have them teach right now, they have teaching experience, and during vacations, if we're loaning our, down the road, loaning our machines, bring them to the Boys and Girls Club for vacation time classes that, you know, kids can do, or have them- or have them come to the library, right?
Or loan them to the Boys and Girls Club.
I remember, I remember when Isaac E. Young used to have a Home and Careers course, where you learn how to bake or cook and sew, sew something. And if it wasn't for that class, which unfortunately, my understanding, doesn't exist anymore in the middle school level, if it wasn't for that class, I would not know how to sew a button on my suit or, or my pants. Something so simple, these basic skills. And if we can bring it back in, in some way, shape or form for our participants, not only young and old, but it'll be, so what, what the magic of a sewing machine can do at this facility, you know?
In my part of the world is known as the domestic science.
Yeah, absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, no, we'll share more. The grant is almost ready to, to go. I think Lisa, Lisa was just making up some final alterations mostly related to budget, et cetera, but we think we have a good plan and I'll share more with you, it's exciting. Let's see what else. Also exciting is that we had a budget vote on May 21st and it was a big success. One of the new trustees who'll be joining us soon is Rihanna Nevin, who's in the audience today. And congratulations, we'll be seeing you soon. So, so wonderful. And our budget passed again, really amazing. I think our, we had a seventy-six point five one percent level of success of all the votes. Seventy-six percent of the folks voted in favor of it. And what's interesting is that there are thirteen election districts, all thirteen were, were carried by the library. They, they voted in majority for every single district, which in years past has not always been the case. But happy to announce that we, we did see that this year. The other thing that I want to announce that, that I think you folks all know, but we're, I'll announce it here tonight and we're working on a press release, and that is the appointment of Assistant Library Director. And you folks all were integral in helping us reach a point where we found somebody that we think was wonderful and the person accepted, and her name is Elizabeth Joseph. And so she will be starting on July 18th and she comes to us with great experience. She opts, she's a native New Yorker, she currently lives in Portchester. She started her career here in the county as a paraprofessional, decided that she wanted to be a librarian, went to school, I believe Queens, got her library degree, worked at New York Public, had some other jobs here in the county and then went to the Public Library of Stanford, Connecticut, the Ferguson Library. And she was there for seventeen years and she's leaving Stanford after all those years to come here. And Elizabeth is a classic success story, somebody who started out as a paraprofessional, a clerk, got her degree, became a librarian one at New York Public, became a librarian one at, at the Ferguson Library and rose through the ranks through her success and hard work. And she, let's see, her, her position is currently, or soon, soon to end, is Associate Director of Community Engagement at Ferguson. And she has really a tremendous background. She's been involved in many professional activities. She's very committed to the idea of social, racial and economic justice and has worked as such in her career at the Ferguson Library to achieve those goals. And it's, you know, it's a small world, the director at the library is an old friend of mine, who I haven't talked to in a while. I never mentioned that, that Elizabeth was a candidate, but when Elizabeth announced, she, Alice called me and she said, I should be mad at you because, because Elizabeth is really amazing, but I'm, I'm happy that she's going to New Rochelle, I think she'll be a, a big success. And then she sent the email to, to, to me that she had sent to the staff and Whitney, I shared it with Whitney and it was, you know, really one, saying this was a bittersweet moment because, because Elizabeth had done so much at Ferguson, but she appreciated this new job for her. And, and when I spoke to Alice, she just said, you're getting a really hardworking person, someone who's very committed to being a librarian and making a difference. So it's exciting. So thank you all for being part of that. Let's see, nearly done. Our continuing, Ed, workshops are continuing on, on July 14th. The Trustee Handbook Series is continuing with Zoom, June 14th, June 14th. It's P R and advocacy from five in the afternoon to six thirty. And I can, I had sent it previously, but I can send you that link again if you are so inclined. I understand it's been a very successful series. And on July 7th, there is yet another program that they're offering. This, this time it's strictly through the Westchester Library System and I want to make sure I get the name of it exactly correct. And it is the latest trustee institute and the topic is using the Harwood Institute techniques in your long-range strategic planning process. We, we're past that this time, but maybe not as much of interest as P R and advocacy, but just wanted to let you know it's out there. Let's see what else, almost done, folks. Again, our friends continue to work so hard, small cadre of people, and they're open their store on Tuesdays, Thursdays and Saturdays. Small donations are still being accepted. And last but certainly not least, our foundation. Many of you were at the amazing Foundation Guardian Gala, that was May 12th, and it was a huge success. I believe over 250 people and celebrating libraries and celebrating some wonderful people who made a difference in, in, in our community and nationwide, particularly tied to health and health issues. And I believe they made a lot of money, which is exciting for us. I don't know exactly the particulars yet, but it was, it was a big success. And I thank all of you for participating and supporting that. I will mention that there is a annual meeting, I forgot to write the date down, I think it's June 21st or 20th, Monday.
It's Juneteenth and it's a Monday and I think it starts at 6:00 PM with a cocktail hour and the actual meeting begins at 7:00 PM.
And, and that meeting is typically a lot of fun, people come together, but there is a serious intent. The, the annual grant is approved at that meeting and so, you know, I, I know that the, the grant monies this year are, are tremendous, it's over $143,000. We did ask for over $200,000, so there's a gap there. And we'll, we'll, I have, starting to have a conversation with Chriselle and the president to see i- if we might be able to achieve something over and above that amount. If not, that's fine, but it's worth having that conversation. And that's it.
You said the annual meeting was on the 20th?
Not the 20th. Good, thank you, Tom.
Yeah, just, on the trustee training, I forgot to mention when I was doing my briefing, that on the first, it was last, last, last week, when is it, June 1st, that we had trustee gathering, the very first trustee gathering, WLS trustee gathering, which was both virtual and, and in-person. So we're lucky that, we're honored to be the first to host that and so it's right in here. I understand that about seventy-seven people were, were present virtually and then a little over twenty of us were, were present e- in-person. And the subject of the discussion was rethinking public libraries as, as an anchor institution. Now I'm glad to say that our members of, members of the board participated very effectively in that. The president of the board was one of the panelists and so was Jack and, and Tom. And it was a lively discussion. It's the first time this is being held, to have all the, the library trustees get together. That, we've been discussing that in the, in the board for a while. That is not, it's not nice that all the libraries have their own little boards here and they're isolated when we're all facing the same problems and we're seventy-seven people. So let them get to know each other and begin to think together and face their common problems together. And that is beginning to catch fire and I hope it continues. So this was the first event that we had last, last week. And I think the discussion on rethinking the role of public libraries was, was quite, quite, quite successful, I think, if those who are able to tune in. Just, just for the record.
And, and just to let everybody know, if you missed it, it's not too late. WLS will have the Zoom version of that, we just sent it to them today. So go to their website and if you folks are concerned how to find it, I can send you the link to, when, when it's mounted, I sent it to Terry and company a little earlier this afternoon.
Yeah. And congratulations that the library budget was approved. Manverman was not very, very successful in that. I was an electoral officer, so I can assure you I didn't force anybody to vote for it. Yeah, congratulations.
That's excellent. Yes, we had over seventy-six percent of the vote and, and it was a pleasure participating on the panel about libraries as anchor institutions. And I agree, I think more events and opportunities for trustees to get together and mind meld and share, share ideas and brainstorm together and, and it would be welcome. It was really a treat. So thanks to WLS for facilitating that and Public Works Partners were great. They were the, the in-person facilitators and did a wonderful job as always. Do you have a personnel report?
I don't.
No, okay. Then we can move to committee reports. So we can start with the budget committee. Nothing, nothing to report except hurrah. We got that passed for this, this cycle. Buildings and grounds, the Buildings and Grounds Committee will be meeting this coming Monday. The, the goal of that meeting is really to talk about our number one goal and our strategic plan, which is to focus on facilities improvement. So that committee will meet and discuss next steps. There's a, a few different things brewing, talking about, you know, planning for facilities improvement and, and, you know, thinking imminently and also long-term and how do we, how do we move forward? And I'm just speaking on behalf of Sarah, who's not here. Community relations?
Yes, so community relations, a lot of things happening for June, so I'll give an update of what's happened and then what's to come. So May and June highlights so far, as of June 8th. Obviously the Help and Learning Center, which is our social service hub here, thank you, social service hub here in New Rochelle, at the New Rochelle Public Library is very, very strong. Sorry, it's the same thing, sorry. So Job Search continues with Sessions Rebecca Mazzine, Tuesdays from five to eight. Sessions are in-person and virtual, the Help, the Help and Learning Center. Sessions are on the rise, especially, and I can see that trend happening, summer employment opportunities, unemployment benefits, SNAPs, recertification, passport information, people are eager to travel. So I'm glad to see that there's a take on that. Westchester County Healthcare Navigator, Elizabeth Blackwell, has an in-person on every Wednesday from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Appointments are available, so they can call the number, 336-0925. Summer civic citizenship classes are virtual on Thursdays in June and July at 6:00 PM. They can register on an RPL calendar. And our PL, Community Outreach Information Sessions are monthly, they continue. Denise has done a fantastic job showing up at the mobile food pantries on Wednesdays, big increase there, giving out library information, free books. There was a successful New Rochelle High School Community Outreach, Community Resource Night on May 11th and resulted in positive connections for the library and New Rochelle community. Continued lobby and table sessions, non-for-profit, including Project Co., People USA, Urban Strategies, Head Start Program, nearest state healthcare vendors, MVP and United Healthcare. Continuation of transition, to support transition of students who are going through the HSC equivalency exam. One of the biggest issues, side notes on this report, but one of the biggest issues is that New York State lost the TASK exam, which was the, the name for the exam for the GED. GED is actually the name of an exam, not the process, it's a high school equivalency diploma. So the GED is back, part of New York State, so what happens is all programs, including BOCES, Westchester Community College, everybody who does the testing has to now get rid of their old system and put a new system. So even though people are getting the education, no one has really tested yet, tests are delayed tremendously because people are still getting their staff trained on GED since they were trained for TASK. So that's a big process, but I'm glad that classes are still happening here and hopefully people haven't been discouraged from attending because some people may be prepared and have been waiting months since January of this year to take the exam and they have been no slots available, especially in Westchester County, Brooklyn. Public Library and other areas have gotten themselves up to date, but Westchester and upper New York State is still having a process. ESL classes continue during the summer, morning sessions are filling up fast. And there's a New Rochelle resident, got the email today, donating their services as a Notre Republic, and there will be specific days, will be on Thursdays at 5:30, on 6/23, 7/21 and 8/18. And then some updates that have been happening, I'm actually, her email, yeah, some updates that have been happening. May 12, 1926 mindfulness meditation, we had about eleven, twenty-one registered, but eleven New Rochelle attendees at average attended weekly. Freedom Land USA, May 14, hybrid event, we had a total of about fifty participants, thirty-seven in-person, thirteen virtual. Sing Your Heart Out rehearsal began May 16th, final performance will be July 16th. They had, the film series, Helter Skelter was postponed June 4th. Women's Jazz Assembly happened May 22nd, forty-five attendees, Cheer Yoga, two times a week, great turnout, ten to sixteen participants. And coming up, Juneteenth, Citywide Juneteenth Celebration, Lincoln Avenue Corridor exhibit, a retrospective Lincoln Avenue Corridor, 1900s to 1960s, happening June 4th to the 24th. And the Juneteenth Kids Art Workshop, June 9th, a trial run for program taking place on June 19th. I believe they were doing quilts, right? Or something like that, yeah. Gospel Choir Performance, June 17th, Friday evening. Bakande African Dance Troupe Workshops and Performance on June 20th. Crossword Coach, June 14th, it's virtual, a, a successful and continued interaction, solving New York Times crossword puzzle, small but a loyal following. And Summer Reading Kickoff Party, June 25th in collaboration with the New Rochelle Bid, Signing Up Children Reading Challenge, host family-friendly activities right here next door to the Ruby D Park. And July and August, a lot of happenings, International Music Festival, Music and Dance Festival, Picnic Party in the Park, July 14th, Meet the Presidents, Virtual, New York Historical Society, The Golden Age of Television, Virtual, Sing Your Heart Out Performance, New York Arts and Arts Community, Lunch and Learn, Pre-Retirement. So a lot happening in the summer, so if you have nothing to do, show up to one of these And a lot of marketing happening, Financial Literacy Workshop, Tom spoke about the Sewing Grant, the gala was a great success, Street Fair, Arts Fest, a lot of things happening.
Thank you, that's amazing, really fantastic stuff.
Just add, just briefly, Dan mentioned that our summer kickoff is happening on June 25th from 10:00 in the morning to 12:00 noon. We're partnering with the bid and so there will be all kinds of activities that'll be available in Ruby D Park, so we're urging people to go. And not just for children, but our intrepid teen staff will also be represented there too as well. So if you have a teen looking to hopefully get them into the summer reading mode, might be a place to visit.
Excellent.
Tom, I don't know if you know of this, I know it's not something that we run, but it, we do have a presence out there at the Farmers Market coming back through the New Rochelle Bid, I haven't heard of anything.
Last, last I heard, no.
It was really, I couldn't figure it out.
I mean.
I looked City Hall again, that's the other one.
That's the other one on Fridays.
That one on Thomas Paine, down to earth.
I thought it said it was like suspended at Ruby D until. I thought it said it was like suspended at Ruby D until for the twenty twenty-two season. That's what I read.
Oh, is that how they're announcing it?
I don't know. Maybe it's not happening.
I, I am not aware that it is happening because I have been, I've been sort of pursuing it with the executive director. And I think there were some challenges in the past. And I, I, I actually urged her, we urged her, if at all possible, to have even, it doesn't even have to be as full-blown as it has been, but it's a really a great community event. I'm not sure where it stands right now.
Yeah, that was a lot of fun, pre-COVID. Anything else?
Just, I share, Dan, you all have the teen programming. So our teens will be busy if they come to the library. We have activities every day of the week. And again, our staff has really got things all organized. And I just urge you, if you have a teen that is looking to, you know, has a little spare time on their hands, they might, might want to come here because it's not all traditional books, which is great. But, you know, there are VR Game Night, Board Game Night, Arts and Crafts Day, Chess for Teens, Video Game Tournament. So there are all sorts of things going on and special programs too as well. And I think the library's an interesting, fun, cool, it's a comfortable place to be. Sorry.
That's awesome. Thanks, Tom. Thank you, Daniel. Thank you. Finance Committee?
Oh, we're gonna put out next week.
So we'll have more to come from Finance Committee at our next meeting. Personnel Committee?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. And then we have Policy Committee, and we have a number of policies. We already voted on a few things, but policy-related. I'm not even on the Policy Committee, but I feel like I am sometimes. We have Chuck and Beth. Do you, are you familiar with the policies that we're gonna be voting on? Yes? Do you want to announce them? What, do you want to say?
Are we voting tonight?
We're gonna vote tonight on a few things. We have the Conflict of Interest Policy. We have the fine adult fee waiving policy. And then there's two other.
Technology, take home.
The Chromebook and Hotspot Loaning Program Policy, the borrowing policy. So those were sent out. If we feel comfortable, I would say let's move forward on the three that I just mentioned. And then there's one more, and then, and then there's one that we will table for next month. So we can start with the Conflict of Interest Policy. Conflict of Interest Policy is fairly boilerplate. It's not, there's nothing, there's nothing crazy about it. Did everyone have a chance to review and feel, do you feel comfortably able to?
No, do you want to read just a purpose?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead?
No, Beth, read just the purpose.
The purpose of this policy is to protect the interests of the Nourishel Public Library when it is contemplating entering into a transaction or arrangement that might benefit the private interests of a trustee or employee of the NRPL. The Nourishel Public Library will not enter, enter, enter into any such transaction or arrangement unless it is determined by the Board of Trustees to be fair, reasonable, permitted by law, and in the best interest of the Nourishel Public Library at the time of such determination. This policy is intended to supplement, but not replace, any applicable state and federal laws governing conflicts of interest. Applicable, sorry. Applicable to not-for-profit charitable organizations and municipalities.
Excellent.
I have a very important post edit. I think we should have a comment after fair, which Beth articulated, but.
Good.
The Board of Trustees.
Fourth sentence, for the center.
Fourth line.
Fourth line.
I have one question, general question, I guess. Shall we be signing off on these?
So we should sign every year.
We did sign off.
We haven't, we have, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we will each.
Yes.
Yes.
Ideally, you should be signing Conflict of Interest, well.
Nonprofit Board Trustees should sign every year.
Every year?
Yes.
Yeah.
Annually, and renew it annually and refresh your, your memory about them. So this is something we can circulate annually. And whatever it was that we signed when we took our oath of office, as it were.
And, yeah, that's a signature block, that's all.
Yeah, so, so, so the, the notation that Chuck mentioned, and then also a signature block for each trustee to sign, and then we would keep these in each of our files. I mean, that you keep the copy on file for us, yes. I mean, if you really want one at home, which I do not. I trust, no, I trust that, that, that this can be kept.
It's on file.
Yep, on, on our, in our, in our trustee files. So with that, with those changes made, does everyone feel comfortable voting? Good? Um, do Beth or Chuck want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
One second.
All in paper?
Aye.
All opposed?
Good. Great. So the Conflict of Interest Policy passes, and we will adhere to that. Next up is, let's talk about the Chromebook and Hotspot Borrowing Policy. It's also in your materials. Beth or Chuck, can one of you share a little synopsis about what this is? Or Tom, if you feel more comfortable?
Sure, briefly, as you had heard earlier, the library was fortunate enough to receive a grant for eighty-seven thousand dollars from the ECF, which is a federal fund, sort of a subsidiary of the E-Rate Fund program. And what we elected to do was to request full funding for a hundred Chromebooks and fifty Wi-Fi hotspots with the idea that we would circulate in-house and also allow residents only to borrow, to take home. And so to that end, again, I have to credit our staff, namely Denise Link and Daniel O'Gerry, with some support from the Circulation Department and other staff members to put together this policy, which is a policy that in many ways mirrors other, other organizations that have done the same thing, but made it specific to our particular community.
Can I just one clarifying question? On the, the long-term lending, like on the Chromebook policy, through the three-week loan period with no renewals for long-term lending. But somebody could borrow for three weeks, return it, and then check it out?
Absolutely.
Again, you just can't renew.
Right. And, you know, to be honest with you, we, this is all sort of brave new world for us. We're exploring, and we may discover that, that we may want to come back to you and say, let's allow for one or two renewals, but we thought initially.
You don't want to have like all the Chromebooks with like.
Right, right. We didn't want it monopolized if that were to be an issue. So we thought we'd be conservative and not follow what we do for most of our other materials and possibly circle back to you once we have more experience under our belt.
So to, to Chuck's point, so I can return the device, check it out, do a walkthrough, and then check it, bring it back and then check it out again. There's no like a window where you.
There's no net, no, no dogs. Yeah, we'll go after you know. There might be holds.
Okay, okay, all right.
No, but it's actually, it's a, it's a.
The hold is pretty much the contingent piece that will hold that, but technically I can drop it off and.
Put it there.
If no one shows up, then check, check it back out if there's a.
Daniel can put a mustache.
And I wonder if it's, to, to both Chuck and Daniel's points, whether it's good to consider a waiting period, right? Because, because even if someone brings it back and thinks that they'll do exactly that, have a walkthrough, that, that, that takes away the opportunity of somebody else who might try and go online that day to, to take it out. So is it possible to build into this policy a waiting period? You have it for three weeks, you wait twenty-four hours, and then you can come back to take it out.
I, I think so. Again, it's a.
Is it trackable though? That would be my question. Like, why should you do that? Like, I, I like the idea though.
You know, I, I can't give you a definitive answer because it's the Evergreen System, WLS. It would, it would mean for us to.
Program that.
And if, if, if we're allowed to.
I guess, I guess, is there, is there a.
Shouldn't there be a serial number that you can, I mean, shouldn't there be something when you're. And if it's on the person's library card, then.
We can track the equipment. That's not an issue. If it's, if a Wi-Fi hotspot is not returned, we can actually close it, shut it down.
Right.
And then it becomes.
It has a serial and.
Right, not valuable. But it's the question that you're asking, Lucille, is, you know, do we need to have this cooling off period of twenty-four hours, let's say? And I, I, I can't give you an answer because we'd have to circle back to, to WLS IT staff to find out if that's possible. I can.
And I guess the other question is, what is the tracking process?
Oh, we, we have the ability to track everything. So we could even know where, where it is and we can, we can shut it off if, if it's necessary.
Well, since this is a new area, why don't you give it a try for a couple of months and see, learn from experience, and then revise realistically.
I think one thing to think about, and I don't know the loopholes in the, in the checkout, checking system.
Six months, whatever, yeah.
Is if I check it out in person, does the system, it, 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 it tracks it in the system that this device is tracked? Well, what stops me from reserving it or reserving a, a device? Does it, does it prompt a device has already been checked? I, I, I haven't done that with a device. Does it prompt an alert saying, device has already been checked out, must return current device to place a hold on a, you know what I'm saying? So then I know, so if I reserve it.
Well, that's a whole other, that's a different.
Even if you use this, that, that's a whole other thing. That's a loophole behind it. But even if I, if I go and I know I took, took, I checked it out in person, and I'm like, oh, I need this because I have X, Y, and Z, and I go in and I put a hold on it for the day I know that I'm gonna return it, I return it and say, oh, I'm gonna check something out. Does the device tell me, oh, device has already been taken out? No reservation can be, or hold can be placed, so a device, you know, I don't know.
What I can, what I can say is that we do for our print and traditional print and non-print material. If, Dan, if you were borrowing a particular book, you loved it, and you kept it for three weeks and you wanted to continue to read it, and then another time, you're, the system will not allow you to renew it that fourth time. So the question is, you know, we're talking about just per se one book. Will, will the system prevent a patron?
Device.
Right, you know, not just one device, but the other ninety-nine devices. That we could find out. I mean, maybe, so you go, Beth.
No, no, no. It says three-week loan period with no renewals for long-term lending. And then in capital letters, no renewals.
Right. And as, what our explanation was, because this is so, such a new program, we didn't want to allow renewals until we saw how the community was going to use it. If there were a lot of people borrowing these and wanted them, if we allowed people to renew them, that would be denying other people access, which is why we said we wanted to be conservative and not allow renewals. But leave the option open for the staff to recommend to the board to consider changing the borrowing rules based on usage.
So I'm gonna propose that we add in a potential, like a, like a twenty-four-hour waiting period for additional borrowing, which is not.
I would disagree to need to figure out whether it's actually practical. I don't, like, you gotta.
You have to beta test it.
I'm more of a fan of like print, print, print as a approach, like give it a whirl and see what happens.
Right.
Because like, I think you gotta make sure, you don't want people like having to, it's gotta be a way to actually track it in the system.
Right. Well, I would also.
You can data-track it though through, see, you're saying, Daniel, is, as an individual, but really we're all barcodes.
Right.
Right, so that barcode is like a gym membership, right?
Right.
So you can dial up the sensitivities of that membership depending on.
But you know, and I think I, sometimes systems, when you do something in person versus doing an online checkout, sometimes the systems don't really talk. So that's what I'm saying. If I go to the library and I take out in person the system, on the backend is my profile online that allows me to reserve. I don't have to return it because the policy says that there's no renewal. But if I go online to reserve a hotspot in a Chromebook, would it allow me to do that, which I know I'm gonna walk into the library and say, here, I'm returning a device. Oh, I also have a hold, a reserve hotspot in Chromebook. Do, do, do you know what I'm saying?
Exactly. They should be talking to each other.
Right, that's what I'm saying. That's, that's the interesting piece. I want to know if it is.
Okay.
Talking versus in-person and the version.
And online.
Which I know it does for the books, because you could take, check it out and then online go in and say, I want to extend my time, whatever. But is it gonna do that for the device? Or is there a prompt and saying, no renewal, no, no reservation? Because it's not a renewal. We're not renewing. I'm reserving an additional. And I'm telling you when I'm gonna pick it up, but I already have a checked-out device.
Right.
Is it gonna trigger me and flag and say, sorry?
So that would be.
Device has already been checked out, must return what you have to check out.
And that's gonna, that's gonna depend on the usage and the, and the density of requests.
We get from people's credit card information on file, we pull these out? So how do we, how, how do we chase them down for money if they broke it or something?
That's been the, the eternal question for not just, you know, this technology, but for books, for DVDs, for music CDs. What we do is, we had a, we used to have a collection agency, and we thought it wasn't financially viable. You know, we were almost paying more to have them go after them. And quite frankly, we didn't like the idea of our collection agency going after our patrons. It was here when I arrived, and we stayed with it and we dropped it. What we now do is that we will, we ourselves create letters and will, will reach out to patrons and say, you know, you, you know, X, Y, and Z books have not been returned. They are considered lost. You know, please return them or you will be responsible for the fees. So that's how, that's how we do it.
But on a Chromebook, you can shut it down.
We can't shut it down.
So it'll become obsolete.
But if there's damage to it.
If it's damaged.
Well, there's, there's that, and we have a, the policy accounts for, you know.
Two hundred and fifty dollars. Someone doesn't want to pay.
Well, you know, it's, and then, then, I mean, and scenarios like that. You know, I guess, the, the bottom line is that people can be denied access to using the library to borrow other materials, which is something that we're not thrilled with. But, you know, that can be done. I mean, we have a museum pass program that has sort of a fee structure similar to this. And even though we've been dropping fines for materials, we do still retain that option because they're so valuable and they're typically very popular. It's just a means to, to, to get them back.
So we have to take this program, I think, for a spin and see how it goes and find out where the pitfalls are. The one question I had was related to like if, upon return, the Chromebook would need to be serviced in any way or double-checked for malware or anything. You know, if there's like a period where this specific, yeah, device can't just come in and then, and, you know, a link gets passed back out, right? I, I feel like there should be some kind of.
We do. We will be looking at them, yeah.
Do we have the people, I mean, I know we have Daniel, but.
And we have another technology person in Roy, and we just have to see to what level, how complicated is it to, to, to check, to check these things? I mean, I mean, we're, we'd be paying top dollar if we had somebody with Daniel's salary and skillset to check that. And we're sort of hoping that we can, yeah, some, somebody else.
This is supposed to begin when?
Um, actually, once.
We approve this.
Once you vote, then we would work through the process. We would probably want to make certain that we publicize it too. You know, just so that people have some sense of it. But we all need to make sure that, you know, the circulation department, et cetera, is all sort of lined up.
Is there a way to have a trial period so that we can circle back and we can identify the next board meeting as a next step to report out, to, to determine, so that there would be an addition to this, to say, you know, this will, this, it's, it's possible we will update this policy and, and make changes.
Or you could pass the policy, whatever you decide on, and say, must be reviewed in two months, three months.
I think we should.
Yeah, I think that's.
I think the policy is great, and I think we should review it, do a trial run. I just had a question about the equipment piece. I think, do we have insurance on the equipment? So in the event that something does break, do we say, hey?
But I, I won't, not to make light of this, but this is all grant money that we haven't paid for anything. And I'm not saying it's, it doesn't count because everything counts, everything that we own. But our investment is, you know, our, 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 our time, you know, you know, et cetera.
So there's a typo unless devo is like a cool term that I'm familiar with. Checkout procedure, the last line of number two.
Where's that? Which one is this?
It's on the D, it's checkout, I think it should be device.
Yep. Check out the devo. I like the, I like the cool. See, if we have to ask them, we're not cool.
We're not cool. So I, I always wonder. Maybe I should not. So let's. So let's, let's, I, I would propose that we vote to proceed with this program, with this policy, you know, as is pending any other changes that, you know, you need to make. I also want to state that having passed it, I believe if you need, if you see an immediate change that needs to happen, let's revisit it next month and change the policy if it's a, if it's a major change.
Is next month enough time?
I don't think so.
I would say, I would say let's give it a quarter or two, so six months.
I'm saying if there's something that comes in in the next four weeks that we need to address immediately.
If something immediately jumps out at us as a flaw.
If something immediately jumps out of it, I, I would like to give Tom the, the, you know, the, we would have to modify it if needed. But yes, I would say, let's, let's look at it three months and let's look at it six months. And, you know, you'll know a lot more by then. And keep us posted, because this is a great program.
Yes, we're excited about it. And we're hoping that we'll get the, the, I was hoping tonight, but didn't happen, our, our ECF grant for tablets.
Yep.
So that's the next wave, you know, so that our community can have access to that.
So let's, let's move forward with voting, so I can make a motion that we, having taken everything into consideration, that we pass this borrowing policy for Chromebooks and hotspots, or, or hotspots, Wi-Fi or hotspots. And can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, excellent.
Thank you all.
Thank you, so that's good.
Good dialogue.
Yeah, so we will, we'll keep, keep our eye on that one. And the last one, the one that we're, that we'd like to vote for, is the, the fines, waiving of fines. We've talked about this for about a year.
More than a year.
Right. Do you want to just share what, just a quick summary?
Sure. The, the library board, actually, I think starting in 2017, was, we, we as a staff went to the board to ask if, asked the board if they would relinquish something. That's a tradition, not just here, but at many libraries, which is the imposition of fines for the late return of material, whether they be books or non-print material like DVDs, music CDs, audiobooks, et cetera. And our, our point of view, which is based on research and which has become an important library phenomena or trend, is that fines, the ideas that fines are, are a tool to help persuade people to return material? When in fact, the studies have shown that it is not particularly effective. And, and, and what, what oftentimes happens is that people who return material late and they, their fines mount up to such a point, they're unable to use the library and borrow material. And studies have shown that it oftentimes help is, ties to communities that are struggling economically and communities of color, which in the library world feels like we're creating barriers and reasons not to use the library, which we think is totally antithetical to what we're supposed to be doing. And so we, we came to the board in 2017 and, and made that request based on the research, based on the fact that in the, in the county, there were a number of libraries that were choosing not to levy fines, including communities like ours, like Yonkers and White Plains. And so the board at the time said, let's start out reducing or eliminating fines for the loan of children's material. And then the board revisited and said, let's include teen material. And the idea of adult material was put on hold for a while. And then, of course, the pandemic arrived and everything, quite frankly, sort of became sort of a de facto, where we were not levying fines for the return of adult material. And certainly the revenue implications are negative and I can't deny that. But I can also say that our revenue stream has been diminishing for quite a long period of time, because our print materials and, and non-print material aren't circulating as much. And on the opposite hand, the, our loaning of, of eBooks and e-audiobooks and streaming services have greatly increased. And of course, there's no fines for that material because you can't keep it longer than the system says you can. So, so in the meanwhile, while we were all struggling with this pandemic, the phenomena of, of eliminating fines became bigger. And during the pandemic, all three major New York libraries, the New York Public Library, Queens Public Library System, and Brooklyn, all eliminated fines across the board for all populations. And in the county, we've seen more libraries eliminate fines, not all in the county, certainly not, but many more. And so currently, we're at a place, just to summarize, where they're, according to board practice, we're not levying fines for children or teens. And because of the pandemic, we haven't reinstituted fines for adults. And so our request is that the board consider allowing us to formally eliminate fines for the loan of adult material. Yes.
All right, then I'll, then I'll jump in. So I'm, I'm glad we're joining this, I just, I just need to note the irony that we're, we're asking to reduce fines after we just passed a policy where we're going to, we're, we're going to levy fines for people. So I'm just, I'm noting, I'm just noting the irony there. But however, that, all that said, I, I'm glad we're getting to this point formally, because the same communities, as you said, who, who need these materials and don't have access to them, are the ones who are being penalized for keeping them because they need them. And this comes from a girl from the Bronx who still has my copy of Pearl S. Buck's The Good Earth, because I returned it and they put so many fines on it and I broke down in tears as a middle school student. And so they let me pay the 25 cents that I owed and then told me to keep the book. So, and you know, and, and I couldn't pay those fines. So it, it's, 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 it's an important move that is long overdue in many public libraries.
I don't necessarily agree, but I, it, isn't it kind of keeping it like an open door for people just to never return them too? Because they won't be penalized?
You know, you, you, I, I, you'd think that that would be the outcome of eliminating fines, the penalty, but we're not finding that to be the case. Our circulation staff says that not only has the situation not worsened, it's arguably better. And I can tell you certainly just from a public relations and a staff point of view, the most stressful moments that they would have in the library, particularly the circulation staff, were the conversations that they had with patrons, not about lost and paid, because people sort of get that, you know? They had a book, they lost it, they understand they have to either pay for it or, or replace it, maybe through Amazon. But the conversations they had with people about the fines, and many of the conversations were heartrending, you know? We don't have the money, we can't afford it, I did it, you know, so many years ago, or my mother and father used my card. You know, it just was, it was really some tough conversations and our staff really struggled with it. It was a really challenge, so.
This is a weeds of, I just want to differentiate between if you've lost the book and you have to, you have to pay to replace it, versus if the book is late and you're returning it and there's fines on the, by the day or however, how, how does that work?
Yep, there is, there is definitely a difference. We are asking the board to relinquish fines for the late return of material. However, if there are materials, if there are titles that people lose, they are obligated to replace them. That's what, we're, we're not asking to eliminate lost and paid.
So, so these are for late fees of returned printed material?
Right.
Or, or DVDs, right? Not the technology.
No, not the technology, or the museum passes.
Gotcha. And then my question is, for those individuals that perhaps have, or families that have fees as we speak right now, will they be eliminated or is it moving forward?
The fines for children and teens were eliminated long ago. And it was great, because a lot of people were able to come back to the library because they didn't have these barriers, they, you know? But we, we, so the next step is if we formally, or, or you give us permission, then we can go to the Westchester Library System and they can wipe the fines for, for adults who have fines on their cards.
Late, late, as long as they return the material.
Late, late, right, yes.
And, and, and that should be a big PR, like bring back your lost books, you don't have to pay, you know?
All is forgiven.
All is forgiven, but bring it back.
Maybe we should have a forgive this week. Sorry. Or forgive this month.
I think we should have that anyway.
Because there's fees on the Chromebook, I'm just saying, it's like.
But that's different, I, I, I don't.
That's technology though.
It's technology, I think they're.
But I get what you're saying, I, I, I get it, I get it.
I think as long as the fees remain for lost or, or books, you're like, I'm not giving this back because I love Pearl S. Buck or like whatever, you know?
I didn't love it, I just had a, had a book report to.
Yeah, I mean, I think, let's see what happens, I, I, you know, I'm in favor of it. I think, I think it's long overdue frankly, and, and I think it, it's more in line with the mission of our library to do it this way. And because you have to pay, if you've lost or, you know, you have to pay to replace it, you're still, you know, you're enforcing and acting in honor of the, the communal nature of libraries. So this is, you know, this is, it's an honor system and I, and I think it's one of the few institutions that, that really embody that. So if people are comfortable, do you have more questions? Can we vote on it? If everyone's ready? Okay, so let's make a motion, I'll make a motion to, to eliminate fines, tell me if I'm saying this right, Tom, for adult print and non-print materials, but not EE materials, right? Just the print and non-print, like DVDs, CDs, magazines.
Not museum passes or the new technology program.
Not museum passes or the new technology, but just the print materials.
And the, of traditional non-print, like.
Traditional non-print, like DVDs and CDs. Can I get a second?
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One? Did you get that, Jean? Okay, thank you, thank you very much. And we have Ashley, you wanted to, us to vote on the new.
No, she's not.
She's not starting yet.
She's not starting till July.
Okay.
Which is why both Elizabeth and Ashley are new children's librarian too. Will be starting in July, so we'll come to you.
In July.
Perfect. And then just to put this bee in everybody's bonnet, we have an annual report for public and association libraries that is submitted to the.
It's, it's submitted to the Westchester Library System as our consortium. And then from there, one of their staff members, Elise Burke, does an amazing job to deal with all 38, all 38 reports with a lot of questions. She will vet it and see if there are any outstanding questions or concerns. And once those have been answered, they will, it will then be transmitted to the New York State Library. And, and Jean is the person that works very hard on making this happen and it's not an easy task. The, not the financial information, Jean can snap her fingers and get that done. It's some of the other elements that relate to service, it's harder to always get answers. And it's always oftentimes changing, you know, questions will change from year to year.
So I would like to wait until next month after WLS has approved it and then we can vote to seal the deal. But I would ask and urge everybody that looks through this, it has really interesting like kind of factoids, like everyone can refresh on what year your term ends and what year everybody's term ends.
Can it be emailed?
I sent it all.
It did, okay.
Yeah, it's a really good.
The CV.
Okay.
It's a really good kind of aggregated document that has, has.
You'll see a date on there for this, I can't put it through without putting a date in, which will be changed once you all agree with it.
Okay.
Just so you can, it shows up there.
And Tom told me there's no rush for our vote, because we still have to wait for the WLS vote anyway. So if we can get this to.
That's what I'm just saying, you will see a date, have the board wrote it on it, on there, because they can't submit it into WLS.
Got it, so it'll be the July meeting date, date, right? I see.
So if you see it, note that it will change.
Got it, understood.
Have to give you a new address, by the way. Have to give you a new address.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, that's like, there's some information about each of us in here, like fact-check that, make sure that it's all up to date and we can update Jean to make sure that we're up to speed. This is my first time admittedly looking through this, so I, I, I have some questions, I think. So that's it for policy, special projects, nothing to report. We can go to public discussion. Do we have a public to be heard, not tonight? Thank you, okay. Look, Chuck, so the time has come, this is a very bittersweet moment, it's actually more bitter than sweet, if I'm being very honest. I'm just going to give my little spiel and I invite everyone else to say words if they have them. But a few years after I came to New Rochelle, I started peeking behind the curtain. And I do that usually through volunteering and like understanding what's what. And one of my first volunteer efforts was as a guest bartender for, for, yep, at Patsy's, for the New Rochelle Fund for Educational Excellence, where I met Jonathan and started talking to him. And he kind of glazed over when I started talking urban planning and he's like, you should talk to Chuck. And so I talked to Chuck and that led us to meet in Grand Central for coffee. Do you remember like bright and early, it was like seven something or eight something? And so what Chuck didn't know then was that he was facilitating my kind of embodiment of a family legacy. My dad was on the library board of the town I grew up in for 10, more than 10 years, he was its president. And what I didn't know at the time was that Chuck would become this beacon for me as I learned the ropes here. He is measured and thoughtful and very conscientious and also funny and lighthearted. So he would like catch me spinning off the rails and just make some like silly joke and I'd be like, okay, everything's going to be okay, right? And like that to me, like, you know, we were making decisions and this was a little bit more of a fraught time, if you'll recall, than it is now, it's much more peaceful now. So it's just, it's been a pleasure working with you, I will miss working with you. I've already found other ways to work with you as my, my call yesterday. So, so you can't escape and, and we'll miss you and we, we have a, we have a wonderful bright future on the board. But in, but, but you will, we will feel the void of your absence and, and excited for your next adventures. Chuck, thank you.
I, I would just like to say, Chuck, eight years, you've served on this board, it might feel longer.
The time did.
Yeah, I think so. But, you know, Chuck, I've been an administrator for 30 years and honestly, you're one of the best board members that I've ever had the pleasure of working with. And you've achieved a status that I don't see very often. You are the proverbial voice of reason. When things are going on, you're just a very thoughtful, smart guy, very calm, and you have a calm, you have a perspective. And I always welcomed your point of view, honestly, even though you're leaving, I can say that without any sense of being a synch, a synchavant. And you'll be missed, but I'm, I'm grateful for the years you gave the library and the community and I, you know, wish you well and all those other great things that you'll be doing.
Yeah, I would like to add that, you know, when I came on board here, I was filling a vacancy. And I believe you were president at the time.
You was president.
Yeah, yes, yes, and.
We were freshmen together.
And then I came into the place where I remember seeing this entire room packed over the whole RXR situation. And I'm sitting here and I'm saying, wow, this guy handled this board and the audience beautifully. Like I've, I've been part of boards and, and, and different things where, you know, it gets heated and I, I, you've never lost your composure and I've learned so much from you and Deidra as well, being here and just, you know, and I think you and I came similar around the same time and, and, you know, we've, we've, we have big shoes to fill with your, with your departure. And I thank you for your leadership, for your guidance and, and yes, that voice of reason, when things are happening, it's like, all right, guys.
Everything's going to be okay.
Everything's going to be okay, yeah, so thank you so much for, for your guidance, your support and just really just moving us forward in a very calm and peaceful way. And I've sat here sometimes and have said. And I've sat here sometimes and have said, I think I told you, I was like, wow, we're so polite to each other. But it's true. And I think we will build that, um, and each person that sits in, where Whitney is right now, has to just compose himself such in a beautiful, respectful way with everyone here. So, um, and you will be missed. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Chuck, for your leadership. Definitely appreciate it. You ran a great race. And so, you know, um, I've enjoyed working on the science committee with you and us having our breakouts and really being able to get to an answer really quick. And I also appreciate your forthrightness, right? Even though you may be easygoing, when you have to make a point, you make your point, right? So you don't mince words about that. So it's definitely appreciated. Um, and I wish you well in your endeavors. I know you've ran a good race, so good luck in the future.
Is your next post-public? It was noted in a meeting, so we know that, um, Chuck will continue to serve the great city of New Rochelle as a planning board member. So thank goodness for that, right?
I like that.
I wouldn't accuse myself.
Because of God.
I like that.
So interesting enough, I, I was there before I came here. So now you're going over there after here. So look at that.
Seems like it's, it's a logical next step.
I'd like to thank all of you. Um, it's been a pleasure. I mean, I wanna especially thank Tom and Jean and Jessica. Um, you know, it's been, you got, I think, the, the, the whole staff, and Tom and Jean and Jessica and predecessors, um, just made it, uh, very easy to do what we do, uh, and have been tremendous partners, especially I've played a, you know, uh, a role in the budgeting process over the years, and that's an intense process, and you all made it really easy, uh, really transparent, really thoughtful. Um, and, uh, I appreciate that. And I think, you know, this, this group of people, as it's composed today, in prior years, is a unique group. Um, I think the, you know, the support that the voters of the city of New Rochelle have consistently shown, you know, this institution, this group of people, the support financially, uh, is, I think, a testament to the unique work that happens here in the, you know, I would, I would, I don't wanna be political, because we're not supposed to be political, but I think, you know, like, you go to the Guardian Gala, and you look at the group of people assembled, that's a, that's a really nice cross-section of our city. And I think this is a unique place in that way. It's board, you know, we play a small role in the, in that. Um, you know, the, the staff and, and Tom and the whole, uh, organization really drive that. But, um, you know, for the small part that I've been able to play, I, I enjoyed it, and, uh, I look forward to watching the continued success of all of you in the library in the future. So, thank you.
We can just tie him up and.
I know. Well, we actually, that was my.
I think a figure serves a pro bono.
That's what, that's, that's, that's what I was just about to say, is that we will, like, buildings and grounds, which we have crock, which includes people from the community. We, we do intend to, um, and Deirdre, you know, helped with personnel, right, going as she left, uh, last year, and we, we, we're gonna suck Chuck back in. Thank you, yes. We would love to, um, we would love that and appreciate it, and we'll make good use of your time, we promise. Um, so with that, um, it's time to adjourn. Don't be sad. Um, can I, can I all make a motion to adjourn? Can I get a second?
I'll say.
Okay, yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, meetings adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.